Welcome to tonight's planning and zoning meeting. First item is pleads of allegiance.
Plea of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please accept attorneys.
Item number two tonight is the approval of two sets of minutes. One was from November the 13th. Do I have a motion for approval or any changes that need to be added?
So moved.
Second?
Take your choice, Rita. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We?
Pose like sign. The second is November the 19th. This was the special mining LDR amendment hearing. Is there any deletions or additions? If not, we need approval as submitted.
Move to adopt as presented.
Got a motion. And do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Jerry? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Item three is an item on consent. Would anyone care to pull this item? Now, I'll read it into the record. It's Diamond Tropic Inc., request for an administrative permit use approval for a veterinary clinic in a commercial plaza. And I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Greg's move?
Second.
Craig? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. It passes unanimously. Item four is an item not on consent. This is Petro Algae, request for a major site plan administrative permit approval for an aquaculture small-scale algae production facility. You on that, John?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hamner. This is a request from Petro Algae for administrative permit for an aquaculture facility to grow algae. The, uh, the site is located on the south side of 101st Street, and it's west of the developed portion, what's historically known as the town of Felsmere, city of Felsmere. And it's essentially in line with 146th Avenue. Uh, the next slide is an overlay of, or an aerial overlay of the site, and it shows the physical features of the site. It shows some existing greenhouses, pond, and a southern, say, one-fifth of the site being wooded. The, uh, the next slide is an outline of the site plan. The site's essentially a little over 18 acres. There's a little over 18,000 square feet of building area proposed with the development. The buildings are outlined in brown, and I didn't outline some of the smaller buildings. The growth ponds and the prototype areas are outlined in green. And, uh, the next slide is the traffic circulation. The driveway will be slightly realigned. Right now, it's at an angle. It'll come in essentially perpendicular to the street. There's a one-way traffic circulation system, and the applicant's proposing for the entire circulation system to be stabilized, and that's allowed in the LDRs because it is a low-trip generator outside the urban service area. Would like to note that it does meet the administrative permit use criteria, and there is one dedication involved, and that's a 15-foot wide drainage and utility easement to, uh, essentially make up their fair share of a, a right-of-way that runs along the east side of the property, and that'll need to be dedicated, uh, prior to site plan release. As far as stormwater goes, there's a couple of different, uh, collection areas that are also used to meet the cut-and-fill balance, and then it's routed to a single pond where it's treated, and then it outfalls to a canal on the south side of the ditch on the south side of 101st Street. As far as environmental issues go, there's a small wetland, it's just under half an acre. They're gonna, uh, there's no impact to that well, and they're gonna leave that undisturbed. They do have a 50-foot perimeter buffer around it, and that's the line you see around it where there's no impact to that buffer. And then, as far as uplands go, in the southern portion, and you saw that on the aerial where those trees are, it's a native upland, and it's just a little over three acres, and the applicant's gonna set aside a conservation easement, just over half an acre, to accommodate the 15 percent native upland set-aside requirement, and that's another easement that'll need to be granted prior to site plan release. As far as the landscape plan goes, most of the landscape requirements are gonna be met by preserved trees. Uh, in the areas where they're planting trees, the trees have been pushed to the perimeter to preserve, uh, good solar exposure to the site for the principal purpose of the algae growth and solar collection. And the, uh, the green areas there show where the, uh, the planted landscape will be, and the retained landscape will be mostly in the southern and northern perimeters and on the east and west perimeters. Based on the analysis, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant administrative permit use approval with the conditions as outlined by staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yes, if I might. Do we have any statutes on the books about odor control? This says there's gonna be no odor. George, do we, do you know if there are any standing statutes that the county has on odor control?
I'm, I'm not aware of any, but Stan might know better than I do.
Not that I don't trust the little beggars, but, uh, I've been through this before.
Yeah, we don't have any specific LDR standards on, on odors.
No LDRs on odor. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Where's the field dirt gonna go? Okay. Would the applicant care to be heard? Huh, he heard me.
I have some questions of the applicant.
Okay. Would the applicant come up, so we can answer some questions for Donna? You want engineering, you want traffic, or you want, uh, would you like the gas station attendant?
Actually, you just asked a question about field dirt. How deep are the ponds, sir?
Uh, the ponds?
Oh, I'm sorry, name.
Corey Howell, Kimley Horned Associates, 601 21st Street, Suite 300, Vera Beach, Florida. The ponds are approximately six feet deep, normal standard stormwater treatment ponds.
Right. They're not very, the algae's not very thick.
Oh, excuse me, the growth ponds.
Right.
The growth ponds are two feet, two, two feet deep.
Okay, so there's not an issue?
No.
Right. Uh, one other question. What type of truck traffic will, uh, this produce?
It's anticipated very minor truck traffic, anticipated no more than one truck per week.
Those were my only questions. Thank you.
Do pick up, just to pick up the algae? What do you, where's, what's the disposal process? I mean, you're taking the algae where? Wrong person?
It goes into a, are you gonna have a processing facility on here, or are you taking it into Orlando?
No, actually, we're taking it out.
You need to come up with, give us your name and address.
I'm Jim McCreary. I'm the Petro Algae Chief Operating Officer. Um, we are gonna be processing only tiny little bits of the algae on site. The rest of it's gonna go to a toll processor location not yet selected.
Okay.
Somebody with, in industrially zoned area.
What's the, uh, time profile you're looking at for building this site?
Uh, we'd like to start as soon as we can, and we'd like to finish in the May-June timeframe if possible.
And I noticed this thing has a, a note on it that the site will revert back to A1 or agricultural if the, uh, system doesn't make it. Is this a beta test site we're looking at here, or is, are you guys gonna look to stay?
Uh, it is a beta test site. It's a demonstration site. It's a commercial demonstration site, really. We wanna prove that it works.
Proof of purpose.
And, uh, then we wanna bring a lot of people to visit it, uh, prospects, people who have told us that they're ready to go forward with, uh, large-scale projects if we can satisfy them that it works.
And what do you call a large-scale progress, a processing plant?
On the land or the?
On the land.
Uh, large-scale projects are, uh, in the hundreds and thousands of acres, uh, which we obviously would not propose to do on this site.
Yeah, okay.
This is a proof-of-process site, really.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Is there any arrangement for reclamation of the, the land, then, when, if you, when you decide that you're gonna go on to bigger and better things?
Uh, it is a leased property, and the terms of our lease with the, uh, property owner require us to return it to basically bare condition, uh, before we vacate.
Good answer.
Okay, thank you. If you leave, Marsh Landing is gonna be really sorry to see you go. I understand you guys eat lunch there every day.
Uh, yeah, we, we have, uh, um, our, our people like it there, and when we bring out-of-town and especially out-of-country visitors, they, they, they get a big kick out of going there and having gator.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, George, this is quasi-judicial since they've spoken. You wanna swear 'em in now, or?
We can go ahead. I thought you guys were just gonna prove it and not actually ask for speakers, but yeah, if you wanna go in and swear everyone.
Those who spoke, would you stand up to be sworn? It's a quasi-judicial item.
Need to affirm that what you said is the truth.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did yesterday.
You did, you did, right?
Did you swear?
If there are no other, if there are no other, if there are no other questions, we need a motion.
I have one other question, George, of course.
Go ahead, yeah.
At first, I, you've answered the questions, actually. At first, I thought, why does somebody wanna grow it when I try so hard to get rid of it?
How many swimming pools?
I welcome the project. I'm glad to see that done. That's, that's a, that's good. But thank you.
The good news is here, it could consume acreage if it works.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions?
I move a privilege with staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Second, third?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Good luck. When you guys get it up and running, I'd like the invitation to come out and see it.
Thank you. I've already answered. Do you have anything to add?
I'm gonna want to get it running.
I weren't gonna talk about paving the road tonight.
It would be nice.
Um, next item is Sunny Side Up. This is a request to rezone approximately 40.3 acres for RM6 and RM8, residential multifamily district to PD TND, planned development, traditional neighborhood design, and obtain conceptual PD plan approval for a project to be known as Sunny Side Up. Okay, John, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hamner. This is a request from Sunny Side Up for conceptual PD plan and rezoning approval for a traditional neighborhood design development. It, uh, the applicant has been in the process for several years, and it's, it's finally made it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They've coordinated with the Regional Planning Council, with the owner of the Simon Mall, and with the, uh, area residents, neighborhood residents. So they've, uh, they've been working this for-
Done their homework?
For a while. And as far as the process goes-
Obviously doesn't matter.
This slide shows the process. The, uh, the applicant's seeking the approval of that first step, Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Once you all make a recommendation, it'll go to the Board of County Commissioners. If the board approves it, you all will see the subsequent preliminary plan development. Those will come back before you all, uh, in a lot more detail. So right now, what we have is very conceptual. If it's approved, the preliminary PDs will come back before you all, and y'all will see a, a little bit more. This slide shows the overall area, shows the zoning of the surrounding and the subject properties. Next slide's an overall aerial, and it shows some of the development adjacent. Woodfield Plan Development's to the north, 26th Street's immediately north. There's some intervening development between 26th Street and the subject property on the east side, which is the Bella Rosa sub development. South and east of the subject site is the Rivera Estate, which is a single-family area. And then south of the subject site is the Indian River Mall. And the green area you see north of the mall is also owned by the mall. It's the mall's retention, the mall's conservation area, and essentially a green belt that separates the hard improvements of the mall from this site. And, uh, just to the west of the subject site across the road is the Bella Vista Development, just to the west of the subject site. Next slide is a, a closer detail of the subject site, so you get a feel for the actual site. And one of the things about the site that's noticeable is the configuration of the site. And because it's so long east to west, and so shallow north and south, it's a very difficult site to really put a plan together, and that's one of the reasons I think the applicant spends so much time, is the, the basic configuration. Again, trying to get something to work and get a development, uh, design to flow on a site like that. So, that gets us to the design. This is the conceptual plan outlined in yellow is the boundary. It's just a little over 40 acres, 350 residential units. The density is 8.68 units per acre, which is above the eight units per acre allowed in the M1 land use. And the applicant's also proposing 32,000 square feet of retail office, which is also not allowed in the M1 land use. And it is allowed through the traditional neighborhood design and Policy 18. It's actually an incentive to promote developments like this through the comprehensive plan, uh, give you a little more density. And with traditional neighborhood design requires a mixed-use component, so it allows for up to 10 percent of your land area to be developed as commercial office and those types of uses. This slide shows the phases, and the phases aren't in any particular order. Again, it's very conceptual. Uh, the things to know about the phases is any phase needs to be able to stand alone independently, meaning have the transportation, utilities, stormwater, all those things. And then any subsequent phase built has to stand alone or with the previous phase. And just let me run through the proposed developments. Starting at the west end, the applicant's proposing multifamily development. As you move to the east, the town center, and the town center's a mixed-use development, uh, consisting of multifamily and commercial office. As you move further east, there are two multifamily, uh, types of development. One, a larger building, and then, uh, a smaller-type building. And then to the east is the single-family. And the single-family is over here for a reason. It's adjacent to Rivera Estates. And again, just to the north is Bella Rosa, which are townhome-style developments at eight units per acre. This is the traffic circulation plan. Again, it's fairly schematic. What I would like to note is there are six access points to the, uh, to the proposed project. Two are interconnections with the Bella Rosa project. One is an interconnection at the south end with the Indian River Mall Ring Road. The applicant will need to get authorization from the Simon Group, owner of the mall, to, uh, to make that connection. The other's at the west end, which is a connection to 65th Avenue, which is also essentially a road that's owned by the mall, and they'll also get, have to get authorization to, uh, to connect to that road. And then the two access points to 26th Street. The main access point, which lines up with Woodfield, which is the west one, will be a full movement driveway. It'll be a right-in, right-out. It will have a right-turn lane and a left-turn lane constructed. And the eastern driveway will have a left-turn lane. This driveway on the eastern end may eventually become a right-in, right-out only. When 26th Street is improved, uh, there'll be a median, and it'll be, at that point, there'll be traffic engineering's decision as to whether there ends up with a median there, and that becomes a right-in, right-out. As far as the internal circulation plan, the red line shows the overall major spine road through the development. The blue and the purple lines are minor streets and alleys and driveways that will service some of the development. And then also, uh, there's a pedestrian plan is also included in this. There's a sidewalk along the south side of 26th Street. There are sidewalks on both sides of the road throughout the projects. And then there's also a trail system that will integrate with the mall. And again, they'll need to get approval, uh, from the mall owner to have those, uh, have those roads, or paths, excuse me, tie into the mall.
John, is the road into the mall? I mean, I didn't notice any purple, any line. I mean, that's, that's considered an, an, an actual roadway into the mall, correct?
Are you talking about 65th Avenue?
No, down, go down to the bottom circle.
Oh, correct. Yes, yes.
I just did.
Yes.
I missed the line.
They haven't dashed that in, or lined it in because, but this arrow is indicating-
It's intended to be put in, but they, the only thing, they, they need the mall's permission? Is that, or is that, it's gonna be part of this for sure?
They need the mall's permission in order to, so yes, it is conditional upon-
Okay.
-getting the mall's approval.
What's conditional, the project approval or that street?
That actual connection is subject to the mall's authorization. Both of these, uh, two connections, the one at the Mall Ring Road and the one at 65th Avenue, which is essentially the northern driveway to the mall. Both of those-
So you're, you're not suggesting that the approval be condition, be, this, be a condition of approval? No?
Uh, no, I'm just saying that it'll take the mall's approval for those to be constructed.
Right. But if the mall does not approve that, that is not gonna be a condition of this project itself, the approval of the project itself? Or is it?
The way we have the condition structured is that they need to, I believe, have five and make the attempts to get those five, so we would evaluate how, and we would wanna talk to the mall as well. And, uh, let me, uh, go in on, let me, I think, condition-
Point is, if you can get the internal- We pass the applicant thing about it when they do their presentation.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay.
Actually, condition 1B deals with the, uh-
Isn't that, that's the easement behind, or is that the easement for the, the road, 1B?
That's prior to the preliminary plan approval, so, again, prior to that, due to that stage, we would wanna see those authorizations from the mall. And again, that's before they get that far down the design path with the firm design.
Oh, well, just, just, just not to belabor, just to be clear, you all have requested and, and asked for five entrances and exits.
Actually, six.
And, or you've got six shown, but you, you would-
We want five, and that's-
Five minimum for the project to proceed. This is conceptual, so should they have to shift around, we'll deal with that when it comes back for final. If they don't-
Yeah.
And if they don't meet acre, they, they may have five, but if we don't like it, then, then we can deal with it then too, right?
Correct.
That's okay.
Mess with that overall traffic dispersion.
Thank you. Good, good answer, George.
All right. The next slide deals with the zoning, with the planned development. You're essentially crafting your own zoning district. And what we've done is we compared what they're requesting with the RM8, which would be the zoning on the majority of the site. They're looking for single-family uses, which are permitted in both districts. They're looking for multifamily units, which are permitted in both districts. And they're looking for commercial uses tied to the limited commercial, which is not permitted in the RM8 district. But again, through the mixed use of Policy 18, is allowed in a TND. As a matter of fact, it's encouraged in the TND to get the mixed-use criteria. And what they're doing is they're proposing limited commercial uses minus some of the lodging and some of the automotive-related type of uses that are allowed in the CL zoning district. This slide relates to the single-family waivers and the single-family development proposed. And I'll briefly run through those. They're proposing 50-foot wide lots, 10-foot front and rear setbacks, zero or five-foot on-the-side yard setbacks, such that the home could either be centered in the lot with five feet on either side, or a zero on one side and 10 on the opposite side. Either way, the home would be at a maximum 30 feet wide. For the front-loaded garages, they would be required to be set back 25 feet from the front property line, which would mean they'd be recessed from the front of the house. So you wouldn't have the, the garage as the dominant feature, and again, that's another uh, TND-type design consideration. And one of the other things I'd like to point out to you all is for the homes adjacent, the single-family homes adjacent to Rivera Estates, uh, those will be limited to single-story, where they're adjacent to Rivera Estate. So there'll be single-family and single-story. The next slide is the overall PD waivers, and it has a single-family as well as the rest of it. I'm just gonna highlight the, uh, the portion that does not deal with the single-family. In the town center, they're looking at getting a 10-foot front yard setback, so they can build a, bring those buildings closer to the street, so you have more of a downtown feel. The other buildings will maintain the 25-foot setback. Again, the rear yards, it'll be a 25-foot setback. And as far as building separation, uh, interior to the project, it'll be a 10-foot separation, which is essentially what's required by the building code. They will requesting to reduce the open space on the single-family lots to 20 percent and increase the building coverage to 35, but the overall project will have a 40 percent, so they'll make up for it in the common green areas. Some other issues I'd like to talk about are the parking in town center. The parking for all of the residential uses, they're committing to do the two spaces per unit, which meets this county's requirement. In, again, as a conceptual, they're not sure about the number of, the quantity of uses, the types of uses, the things like that within town center. So they said, they're looking at meeting the parking ordinance, or at the time they come back with the preliminary PD, they would come in with a shared use study, and we've had a number of those. And what's, uh, the concept between that is there'd be shared parking between the residential uses and the commercial uses, such that it wouldn't be a total aggregation of those requirements, but it would be something less. And that's allowed by the code. So they've requested the ability to take care of that, take that opportunity through the code. The next item are the streetscape or streetscape improvements. It's required of all TND, PND-type developments. And they've shown, again, some very conceptual, uh, renditions of that, but those are more details that you'd see at the preliminary PD state, when they came in, how they're gonna treat the streetscape. Street trees, uh, pavement treatment, curves, how the building built, two lines, things like that. And the architectural criteria. For a lot of the larger buildings, they really wanna showcase some of the architecture, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. But that's something, again, you'd also see in greater detail at the preliminary PD. I gave you in your packets, um, some of the architectural details, and I haven't included any slides because they just didn't reproduce well. But, uh, you all have those, and again, you'd have greater detail at the time of preliminary PD approval. And the, uh, as far as Policy 18.1 goes, the staff report goes into a great amount of detail about how they meet Policy 18.1, so I don't wanna belabor that. And lastly, there's a reverter, a 10-year reverter. If this does get approved, nothing gets built for 10 years, the zoning would revert to the zoning that it is today, essentially RM8 with a little bit of RM6. As far as the buffering and landscape plan, I'd like to describe that. And essentially, every place where they're not adjacent to a road, or they're not adjacent to the mall, there's gonna be a type B buffer with a six-foot opaque feature. And let me see if I can get the mouse and just, it runs up all along Rivera Estates, up the east property line, along Bella Vista, down through the preserve, and again, that'll be preserved area, and then all the way up to 26th Street. So all that's gonna be type B buffer with a six-foot opaque feature. This, uh, shows the street trees, which will be part of the street treatment, gives you a real conceptual idea about the scope and the magnitude of the street trees. Along their frontage with the mall, they're planning on reducing what would be the normal buffering requirement to one tree per 40 feet. And the reason they would like to do that is they would like, essentially, their residents to have the benefit of all that green space that's on the mall site, essentially not buffering themselves from a large, open green space. And they're also gonna work with the mall to reduce the buffering. There's a 25-foot setback required, and what they're planning on doing is getting an agreement with the mall that allows 15 feet of that, essentially a setback easement on the mall site, saying that they're gonna, the mall would agree to lock up that 15 feet to count as part of their 25 feet. So that would be yet another thing that prior to preliminary plat, that we're gonna need to see, is that agreement with them, with the mall, to, uh, to lock that up, or they'll have to go back and, uh, essentially redesign it on their own site. Adjacent to the roadway, 65th Avenue, there'll be a 25-foot wide roadway buffer, which is the planting, a little close to a type B buffer. And then, I wanna talk a little bit about the 26th Street frontage, since that's the most public and what will be seen the most. The applicant's proposing to culvert the canal, so they'll need the permission from the Indian River Farms Water Control District to do that. And in doing that, it'd be, uh, a very good aesthetic benefit. I think, um, the place that's most visible that's done that recently is the, uh, the Vera Beach High School, and it's really improved the, uh, the look of that area along 16th Street, uh, with the trees behind it. So that's been a good aesthetic. So they're planning on doing that and going to one tree every 40 feet, and that's so they can showcase the architecture of the buildings that will front 26th Street. And again, they've, uh, provided a little bit of, uh, detail, at least conceptually, about the, uh, types of buildings that has been included in your backup. But that would need to be done. If they, if they can't secure that, then they have to meet that 25 feet on their own site, and, uh, again, that squeezes them a little bit more north and south, and as you can see, the site's pretty shallow north and south. Environmental issues. The site's mostly Brazilian pepper. The area that I've outlined in green on the slide is roughly the area of the 7.24 acres of native upland that's on the, they've committed to essentially just over an acre of native upland set-aside that'll be an easement, and that'll meet the 15 percent. That's the minimum. There could be more, and again, that's, uh, as we get into the preliminary PD, that would be decided where that would occur. There are no wetlands on the site. And as far as tree preservation goes, the greatest opportunity for tree preservation, really, the only worthwhile trees are gonna be in the area of that native upland. And again, that would be a preliminary PD. And again, that would be a preliminary PD. We'd get a detailed tree survey, like some of the ones you all have seen with other developments, at that point in the development process. As far as public benefits go, again, culverting 26th Street, some of you, big aesthetic, as well as a safety improvement, the integration with the mall pedestrian-wise, vehicularly, infill near a major commercial. Again, the... When you look at infill and you look at where the public has invested dollars for infrastructure, this is one of those areas, rather than sprawling out more towards the edge of the development area. Right turn lane on 26th Street at the west entrance and publicly accessible amenities are the benefits. As far as dedications and improvements, again, culverting the canal's a big one. The left turn lanes at both entrances on 26th Street, the right turn lane on 26th Street, the public sidewalk on 26th Street, and the conservation area. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners rezone and grant conceptual plan approval for the Sunnyside Up project with the conditions listed in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yes, sir.
I have several.
Remind me of the 26th Street widening project schedule. Where are we on that? Bob, somebody?
The good news is the eastern part of that project from US 1 to 43rd Avenue is progressing real well. We're probably at about 90% design. The city of Vierby Beach is managing that project. They're managing the design, and they'll also be managing the construction. We're doing that part first, and that's a real important project, because we've got grants for probably 30 or 40% of the construction. We're using a number of different grants. We've got an intermodal grant. We've got some TRIP funding. So everything's going real well, and I think within the next six to eight months, it'll probably be under construction, that part. Now, west of 43rd's a little more problematic. You may have seen reference to our capital improvements program changes. Bottom line is revenues declining everywhere. Our impact fee revenue is down probably 90%. Our gas tax revenue is down because...
Raised taxes. It's no big deal.
Well, not only, but not only are impact fees down, traffic impact fees are down, but gas tax is down because people are driving less when gas prices were high. And also, once-in-local option, sales tax revenue is down, and we allocate 28% of local option, the sales tax, to transportation improvement. So bottom line is we're having to push back a lot of projects. And the 43rd west part of the 26th Street project right now is not programmed. It would like to do it. It's a really good project, but...
It's not on the five-year horizon.
What about the Type C level of service around countywide? Probably not there either.
The level of service is okay on that road. Level of service is okay.
You're looking at 75% on those streets that you've got on the list here. You're down to 75% now. And the 58th Street, Route 60 exchange is going to take place when?
Oh, that, they... The intersection improvement for State Road 60 and Kings Highway, that is still on schedule. It's a pretty expensive project. And I'm not sure. I think within the next two years.
Next two years.
Eighty-three. This won't be built out by then.
That was my next point. This won't be up until those are probably done, right? Or about the same time?
Any other questions, Jerry?
At what point is the culvert be covered? What phase? Beginning? Is there any timetable on that?
We would be looking for the culvering to occur with construction of any portion of the project that fronts 26th Street. So, I mean, it's got to be done with...
Which is pretty much the whole project.
The majority of it, certainly, yeah. Otherwise, you get back to the single-family, and that's about the only portion.
You'll get turn lanes if you don't do it, yeah.
If the applicant would listen to this, in case we don't, when they, in their presentation, the questions I have go back to your buffering again, and then on those driveways. Because we're talking about conditional uses, which I'm assuming says we need to see this if we're going to move further. And I would expect that to be in a motion, so I need to make sure the applicant's clear on how they address that. First one is the 15 feet. Now, if they have a 15-foot buffer, the part with the mall where they're sharing, does the mall have extra green space? Is that what works, so that you can borrow green space from the mall to make it work? Is that the intention?
Correct. And let me go back to the...
Because you used some terminology that I thought was kind of...
Big.
You've got...
There's a 25-foot setback required, and the applicant's looking at providing 10 feet on their own property.
It's a 25-foot PD setback buffer area. That was a terminology I hadn't heard before, so...
Correct. So they're looking at providing 15 feet. So they would need to get some sort of authorization from the mall...
About 10 feet.
For the 15. And you can see on the aerial that there is a large setback and a, you know, large green area at the mall.
It appears to work, but I mean, we all work in square footage and all on green space with... And does the mall, when the mall was built, did they have extra green space that they could... Because you're talking about assigning this to Sunnyside from the mall side.
It's the setback and not necessarily the green space. They're going to meet their green space interior of their own project on a percentage basis.
Okay, all right. This is something that the mall could do without jeopardizing. I mean, I would think the mall would be in favor of this, and they'd probably do anything they could to have, you know, six or eight hundred, some, however many people, they might shop there easily. I'd be glad to let them have it. But I just didn't know if it'd conflict with any other, the square footage requirements. The other was on these, on the driveways, we're saying we want five acceptable driveways. We can't just go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 out on 26th. I mean, we've got to have, the intention is to have the flow through here. I know Richard and I know the group will do a very good job, but that's on the, when we approve this, we're talking about acceptable entrances, correct?
Correct. And number nine is talking about having those specifically tie in with a purpose and meaning. And you could not do just five on 26th. I mean, the county wouldn't approve that just from an access management standpoint. So they need to be five with a logical purpose.
The other thing is the upland area appears to be on their plan, depending upon how you shifted it, there's a, it looks like one of their, is that the dark spot? Is that one of the greens, green spot, green areas, correct?
The shaded area.
See the shaded area? Isn't that, isn't that considered green space, or is that something else? Is that right, right in the middle? Where the green, where the trees are?
It's...
What is the indication on the, I thought it was part of the green space?
It's shaded black on the, on this particular, is the native upland set aside?
Yes.
Eight acres, 15%.
Is that the, is that the area that they're talking about setting aside? So they're going to preserve that area? The whole area? I was confused. They said the one acre, and I thought they were going to be diving into part of the tree area. Looks like from your, there's an area, I guess, where there's two buildings. See, the heart, the green area slants away from that, and that's, I didn't understand.
That doesn't match that.
It's 10%.
This is 10% of the whole?
Yeah, it's eight acres of open space. 10% is about 1.8 acres. That's what it was.
That's what this, it just looked bigger than that, and I see it confused.
It's 15%.
The light comes on.
Okay. Okay, that was it, Jerry. Go ahead.
I have one more question. They're going to increase the size of the lake with the mall's approval, or how's that going to work?
There's two paths they're pursuing right now. One is a standalone lake on their own property where they do not need the permission of the mall. And that's sort of their fallback position. What they would like to do is what you've indicated is essentially cross the property line and just expand the mall's lake. And that way, you get a lot more volume, because you take out that, essentially, that big triangle of berm that runs between the two lakes. And they would like to get that worked out. Again, they need the authorization of the mall, authorization of St. John's to do that. But that's what they're hoping to do. But their fallback is just a, a single lake or a lake on their own site.
In that same area, or...
Yes.
I mean, it looks like, for better for worse, when we get into the, further into here, they've got authorization, the mall is tied pretty heavily to this project.
It is. And they purchased this property from the mall. They have a relationship, and they've been talking to the mall for some time now.
That was my next question.
They have some level of comfort, but yes, it is heavily tied to...
They have a relationship.
Any other questions? If not, we'll get the applicant up here.
I have one question, George.
Go ahead.
John, on your recommendation 1A, where you say they're going to obtain written approval from Indian River Farms to use the canal right-of-way for landscaping and buffering purposes, you're talking about the infill and the culverting of the canal associated...
Correct. There's a 30-foot canal right-of-way that they would be culverting, and then they would be using that for landscaping, so they could come closer to that property line. If they don't get that, the applicant would like to be able to essentially drop back and do the 25 feet on their own property and bring that back before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Have to make the change.
And the Indian River Farms, usually, if it's an open canal, they don't want anything associated with their right-of-way because of the cleaning of the canals. But with the culverting, that's what you mean?
Yes.
David's careful about his territory.
Right. Any other questions? If not, we'll...
I have one. The culvert is just that, how long is down at 26th?
The culvert would run the applicant's entire stretch of 26th Street, which would be from 65th Avenue down to the point where Bella Rosa starts. So it would be, I don't have an exact dimension, but it would be their entire furniture.
And what about the five or six entrance lanes? Are they going to be gated?
No. No, no, this would be open. The streets could be private, but open to the public.
And on the south side of 26th, there's going to be a sidewalk there, then?
Yes. With, if the culvert gets approved, and again, that's contingent on the culvert, because we don't have canals on the...
Culvert doesn't get approved.
Approved, the sidewalk would also, right?
Is there a sidewalk on the opposite side of the road there, on Woodfield side?
There is a sidewalk.
Right, yeah, there's a sidewalk on the north side.
On the north side.
Excuse me, John. You said if the culvert doesn't get approved, then what happens?
Then there would not be a sidewalk on the south side of 26th Street, because we don't want to put a pedestrian facility that close to the canal.
So this is not going to be contingent upon them getting approval to culvert the canal? Okay, all right.
So if they want to go to publics or someplace further east, then there would be bicycle paths or some way of getting towards that general area?
From a pedestrian standpoint, there's pedestrian interconnection, they're trying to have several pedestrian interconnections with the mall. One at the very west end that would come down, and this would kind of put you out somewhere behind...
Target.
...some others, Target, Home Depot area. But others that also connect in, so yes, from a pedestrian standpoint, there's a potential to make your way. And again, there's a lot of details to work out to actually have that occur.
Yeah, this is conceptual.
It wouldn't happen on 26th until they connect the rest of the sidewalks. So whether they had it or not, there's still more sidewalk to be done out there, I think. Any more questions? If not, we'll let the applicant be heard, and then we can answer some more questions if necessary. Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bruce Barquette. I practice at 756 Beechwood Boulevard, and I'm representing the applicant. I really, I'm only going to address one small point before Mr. Bielowski comes up and presents his short presentation. But Mr. Smith, you brought up a point about the approval from Indian River Farms Water Control District to culvert the canal, and that's certainly one issue. But a separate issue is to use that culverted canal for landscaping and buffering purposes. And the way this condition reads, it says that we require approval from Indian River Farms to use it for landscaping and buffering purposes. Well, what I'm concerned about is if they let us culvert it and they don't let us landscape it, I don't want to have to come back to you to allow us to landscape on our own property. So I would just like to have the alternative built into the condition that if we don't get their permission, then we can just...
That you have the right to landscape on theirs if you have it. If not, you'll do it on your own.
On our own.
You're going to landscape, but okay.
That's correct. Yes. So I'd just like an amendment to that condition, or... Thank you.
Mr. Barquette, a question. On the trail, the trailway, the walking path, that's on the mall property. Is there a maintenance agreement, or what's the agreement between this project and the mall on maintenance of that?
You know, I would have to let Mr. Bielowski, Mr. Eder, address how far along that's come. We, I know that when we purchased this property from the mall, we had several agreements with them, and there's been some ongoing dialogue in terms of interconnectivity. I don't know if the final details of who's maintaining what have been worked out yet.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Richard Bielowski, 685 Reef Road, Indian River County. Very pleased to be here tonight. John, if you can queue up our PowerPoint there. I understand that there's a big party somewhere in town tonight, so I've been asked to make this presentation very brief, although I've...
Take as long as you'd like, Richard.
Until we receive your invitation.
You're invited, so take as long as you want. Well, I actually had, I've cut it down from the original two hours.
I like mine over medium.
Let me see how this, how does this work then, John? Is that right there?
You should just, oh, no, you should, I think if you just click, you'll go.
Okay. So I would be very happy to answer your questions. Our team is here tonight. David Eder and I are the managers of Sunnyside Up LLC. Keith Pellon, Brian Good, and Jim Vedder are here from Kimley Horn to answer any questions. Jody Sisk, who's our biological consultant from Zev Cohen Associates. And of course, Bruce Barquette is here if we have any, any questions that Bruce needs to address. I did not ask our architectural team to come tonight, but I wanted to say something about that, because Sunnyside Up, I would like to say, is a very serious project. And one of the reasons we would like to take the time that we won't take is really to make it clear how special this is, because it's taken a very long time to get here. Most applicants blame the staff for delays, but I'm afraid in this case, we can only blame ourselves for the delays. And if you are familiar with something called obsessive-compulsive disorder, you'll probably understand why. We revised this project, and revised this project, studied, revised again, many, many feedback loops with our architects. Keith Pellon's done a great job as our land planner, and Keith has been to the Florida Panhandle to photograph every TND and new urbanist community in the Panhandle. We've taken trips down to Palm Beach to look at some really outstanding projects. We've, we've just done what we could to make this a very special project. The, I wanted to say something about our architectural team, because, you know, we don't have exemplary architecture in Indian River County. There's some exceptions, or at least in the visible spectrum, we don't. But behind the gated, guard gates of the gated communities, we have some of the finest residential architecture in the United States, and we have some of the finest residential architects as well. And even though I'm an architect, I decided I wouldn't be the architect of any of these sections, that I would take advantage of the fact that none of these architects have really done much in the public view. And, and these are architects who are deeply trained in new urbanism, who are award-winning, internationally renowned. Scott Merrill, for instance, who I think has no public buildings to show for himself in Indian River County, is doing work in Russia, Saudi Arabia, United Arab Emirates, China. So we've, we've had a great time working with what we think are some of the most talented folks we could possibly find. Staff originally sent us to Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council to do a charrette of this project, to have TCRPC's urban planners address the design in a design session. Staff, John, Stan, and Bob were all there for the morning session to input the county's perspective on this. You should know that the representatives of the mall were there, their civil engineer was there. We have been working very closely with the mall. There are certain agreements that still need to be formalized, but the mall has not really objected to anything except this one, we had one, another vehicular connection there, and they felt that that was too challenging through their created wetlands. So that has become a raised walkway pedestrian connection instead, which is fine, because this project is about connectivity and walkability, the ability to walk to the mall. The original master plan was done. We came out of that with something that we could have almost come here with, but a few years later, again, I go back to the OCD reason for taking so long. This is the final master plan. It doesn't vary a whole lot from the original Treasure Coast proposal, but it's immensely Staff pointed out the, all those locations and the different phases of our development. In terms of walkability, you can see from our town center in the second, in the center, most of the development, with the exception of the single-family, is really within a quarter of a mile walking radius, and the farthest point is a half-mile walking radius. Sometimes it's said that nobody walks anywhere here, but I think part of that is not laziness. It's the fact that there isn't a whole lot of charm in walking from one end of the outlet mall to the other. You, you know, you're probably inclined to get in your car and drive over to the other side. We have all sorts of interconnectedness, mid-block connections. I think the walking experience here will be a very charming one. And here I'm going to have, David, if you could pass out the popcorn. And here, I'm going to have, David, if you could pass out the popcorn, uh, we've got a little animation of, of the project, and kind of let you get a, a real sense of what it's like. This is starting on 26th Street, should be playing, and one more click. There we go.
And technology's a wonderful thing, isn't it?
Yeah, and, and, and at least I rehearsed this one about 20 times, because this is the one I did not want to have break down. Um, let's try again. All right, John, we could go, um, to, uh, back to the, I'm going to give this to you. Could you go back to the Windows Media file on, uh, on, in the file? Let me just do it that way. Is there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
So, these are not gated?
There you go.
You can still control it.
Uh, I would, I, yeah, like, control it if my eyes were good enough.
It's all John's fault.
Click, oh, you gotta go the express.
Well, I just, yeah.
There you go.
He can see his monitor, I can't see-
Easiest thing is us just say no, and then you delete it.
There we go. Now, okay, there we go, and, and you'll notice that to be, as you enter, there's a roundabout. That was originally on the county's list of places to study roundabouts, and late on in the game, Chris Mora told us, no roundabout unless we were willing to take it out later. I gotta tell you, it was, it was enough work to even contemplate taking it out of the animation, but taking it out in reality was too much, so we have, uh, let that go. You're starting now in the town center. As you enter, there's an outdoor plaza with eating, a place for outdoor eating, outdoor performances, general gathering, because this is all about gathering and sense of place and sense of community. This is looking from the mall area toward the townhomes, townhome area designed by Peter Moore and Associates. Um, and you'll see the, the walk, uh, along the, the townhomes are, um, well, you'll see in a moment how, as we swing in here, uh, face courtyards, uh, gathering places. Again, there are many parks and gathering places in this, uh, Peter was inspired by the traditional rowhouses of older cities. And then we come to Scott Merrill's Town Center. Um, this is the corner of Keating Boulevard and Bowling, I think it's a Bowling Alley. And, uh, this is, this is the town center, portion of the town center that fronts the mall's created wetlands and the mall's, uh, retention areas. I like this, this part of the street, it reminds me a bit of Winter Park that has a shopping on one side and the, uh, the park across the street. Uh, as you look down the road, you begin to see Clem Schaub's condominiums, which in your plan look like rather massive buildings, but Clem has done a really masterful job at breaking these up to, to appear to be very delicately scaled rowhouses. And here is Mark Fignone and Tom Hous's, uh, atrium apartments, another very traditional building type. You'll notice that the buildings are close to the street, it's a principle of new urbanism, that we address the street, that the street's a friendly place of interaction, not something that we want to buffer the view from, and, and you get the sense of what a, you know, the walking experience of the project. Okay, I'll, oh, no, yeah, I, we really, let's see, John, we may not really need to show the rest of the slides, um, after that. I think there's, uh, there's nothing in there of, of real significance, it's just recirculating.
That was, that was impressive, Richard.
Well, we, we can, we can thank Adaro Abello of, uh, another local. We have really tried, we have a huge talent pool in this community, and again, I, I think we don't see it in the built environment, and, and I think that's much to our detriment. So, part of our program here was to encourage that local creativity. I think, you know, we've had a tremendous amount of fun, Keith has been great to work with, and, uh, like I said, it's a, we've taken this seriously to create a new paradigm. We think, uh, we're obviously in tough times right now, and, and we think, we hope we come out one of these days, but we think when we come out, the future isn't about getting the past back on track. The future's about sustainability. One of the tenants of this project will be, um, at least Florida Green Building Coalition certification, if not lead. Um, David and I have built three of, I think, the only four FGBC certified homes in the county. Um, we want this to be the Windsor of Indian River County that the public gets to see, not that is locked behind a guard gate. So, um, that's Sunnyside Up. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. Our team is here, uh, to answer any of the detailed questions you might have, and we thank you for the opportunity to present the project.
Richard, what are your height on your buildings there?
Um, Craig, I, I labeled on, on the longer presentation, I labeled the elevations. Let's put it this way, none of them exceed 35 feet to the, you know, to the ceiling above the finished floor and 15 feet above that. They vary to some extent, obviously, some of the single-family homes are, are single-story, but, but the tallest buildings are within the 35 plus 15 requirement.
In the residential area, where, I know we've got single, um, the single-story by the other residential, your neighbors, what, what kind of plans, or have you all laid out plans for the rest of the houses? Is it, are you going to let the, try and let the market demand, are you going to, every other house? What were your thoughts on two-story houses? You know, we've, we've had a problem, probably, uh, in our own mind, of about, close together, two-story homes that become like little walls. I didn't know if, if you, have you drawn your look into the housing yet?
Well, you know, yes and no. I mean, quite honestly-
It's not going to be a stipulation, it's a sure answer question.
Yeah, quite honestly, as an architect, I actually don't have that problem of two-story. I mean, I think when you talk about McMansions, yeah, but I, but I don't think this is the place for McMansions on these sites, so I would imagine a variety of one- and two-story homes with probably not having the two-story homes shoulder to shoulder, uh, because in most cases, we, in, in the preliminary plan book that we submitted, that I hope is in your package, uh, we show courtyard-type zero-lot line houses, and that doesn't work very well when you have the courtyard and, and the guy on your other side is two stories. Um, our architectural approach will be a, pretty much a Back to the Future, uh, traditional design. We'll probably go to some of the same architects and some other architects to each design a model. Um, our, our intention is to make it special, not to make it, uh, same old, same old track, sprawl, architecture.
I didn't see any gates, Richard, is that by design?
Any, I'm sorry, didn't see any?
There won't be any gates?
No, I, I, you know, I think, you know, Windsor's an interesting anomaly to the notion of, uh, you know, the notion of a gated, new urbanist, traditional neighborhood development. Uh, there's a disconnect there. This is absolutely about connectivity. You know, we offered the Rivera Estate folks the ability to connect either pedestrian or vehiculally, and they, they ran away screaming saying no. Quite honestly, I don't know why. Uh, I think it's a mistake on their part, but it was, it was their choice, and, uh, we're big believers in connectivity. In fact, between Bella Vista, Bella Rosa, Sunnyside Up, and Woodlands, uh, there's close to a thousand homes that will take access through our development to the mall, uh, meaning for all but 423 of those homes, none of the, those residents will have access to 1.3 million square feet of commercial space without going on a county road. Um, and I believe, you know, you take a thousand homes going with the ability to go through our town center, is that 2,000, 2,500 people, it makes our town center a very viable little minor downtown area.
Good point. Make the demographics. Any other questions, Harry?
Parking for the condos and town hall, and the townhomes, under, under the buildings?
Uh, the, the townhomes are garages, dual-car garages from alleyways between the, the two buildings.
Right.
The town center, um, is, is a podium with a, basically structured parking on grade with two levels of residences above, with a large courtyard in the middle, so when you're on the podium, you, you essentially feel like you're outdoors. There are large planter areas and potted planted areas. The condominiums have, um, uh, again, structured parking on, on the lower floor with, um, units above, and again, wide hallways that, that become courtyards in the center of the buildings. The atrium apartments have some on-grade parking with garages, some parking under the buildings, and then, of course, the single-family homes are single-family homes.
Did I notice, it looks like a lot of parking along that, one group of, um, atrium homes, whatever you want to call it.
Um-
Just to the west of the single-family homes, that area?
Yes. Um, there, yes, there is on-grade parking behind those, there's only, in the atrium apartments, there's only some parking, um, underneath the building, but the parking is screened from the street, uh, it's buffered by the, uh, by Upland, uh, the hammock area behind it. Um, the, the goal here is to not let parking dominate in any way, that, that buildings address the street.
Okay. Greg?
I'd just like to compliment you on your design, your vision. Uh, it's, uh, I love to see things like this that are so divergent from the national groups that came into our county in the last 10 years and, and did their thing. This is, uh-
Very refreshing.
Thank you. You know, I, I get people arguing, saying, "Well, but people like sprawl, and they like that kind of community," and, and now, the kind of response is, "Well, yeah, they probably do, but where is their alternative so you really know what the answer is?" And we continually have people tell us, "Oh, you know, that, I'd like to live in a place like that." So, um, you know, we're, we're looking forward to, uh, what's, what's the reverse of it, you know, to the bubble reforming in somewhere or another, to, to being able to move forward here in the future. I, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. This is a pub, a public, okay, go ahead, Bruce.
What about the recreational activities within the development?
Recreational, well, you know, we have two, um, group, uh, outdoor pool areas with, with recreation meeting hall rooms. We have that outdoor plaza that you see when you enter, uh, enter from 26th Street. We believe that the sidewalk experience itself with the arcades and outdoor tables is, is itself a kind of public space. The mall's, um, gated wetlands and retention area are really, they're available right now for, you know, public access, so we have an incredible nature amenity. I mean, you know, you're looking at a 40-acre development, but, you know, in, in reality, you're looking at about a 75-acre development with 35 acres of it being a natural amenity.
Sure.
And then, in, within the 18.1 ordinance, we're required to have a certain amount of civic uses. Um, I think it's in the staff report, but that could be a post office, it can be a public meeting hall. Um, there, there are a number of things that fall under those definitions, as, as we get down to details, we will be including those, uh, amenity package. In terms of activities, which was, was your question, I, I think, you know, we're, we're not that far along, uh, we just-
Like tennis courts or something like that?
Um, no, there, there are no tennis courts. Uh, the recreation is all passive recreation, swimming, walking. Uh, tennis courts take up a fair amount of room, and for that many people, we'd have a lot of tennis courts, so, and the answer there is no.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing, so-
Thank you.
The public hearing is open. Would anyone care to speak to the project?
Students included.
Should I pick somebody, or close the public hearing? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions? If not, we need a motion.
Move approval?
Stand up.
Motion to move, um-
An exception there.
Is that with the, uh, request?
Landscaping.
Bruce May, that would be the-
Landscaping.
Um, must-meet landscaping requirement on their own property?
Yes.
Addition, okay. A motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Craig seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like, pose like sign, passage unanimous. Thank you all for coming.
Looks great, guys. Beautiful project.
Under Commissioners Matters, anybody have anything?
Everybody happy with holiday?
It's a shame he's not here to be wished, it's, it's a shame he's not here to be wished well, as, uh, we received the resignation of George Lawrence today. He served us honorably and well, and I, we wish him well, so he will be missed, and we'll look forward to whoever, I guess it's Mr. Solari, or whomever his new appointment is, to those of us who are left, because on January 6th, they get to vote on all of us, and on January 8th, we're scheduled for a meeting, if in fact, we have a meeting, so I, I, I would hope we don't, but, um, which is the, I'd put in a recommendation if I could, so-
I'll second that.
Um, under Planning Matters.
Just a few things, Mr. Chairman. Since your last meeting on November 13th, um, on November 18th, the Board of County Commissioners approved, adopted the evaluation appraisal report, and we expect to hear positive things from DCA probably in January on that, to finalize that. The text amendment that you all looked at for the coastal high hazard zone and mobile home, um, rental parks and allowing RVs, the board, um, okayed the text amendment for the coastal high hazard, but they eliminated the, uh, the text amendment portion for allowing a percentage of RVs in mobile home rental parks.
Yeah.
They, I, I think the decision there was just basically that it was, uh, there were just too many concerns, um, from-
They didn't want to have, they didn't want to have to monitor.
Didn't want to have to wait until the LDR time, I think, for it all to be tied down. On December 9th, the board approved the rezoning and small-scale amendment on US 1 at 67th Street that the Realtors Association, um, had applied for, and you all had recommended for that. At the mining workshop, and I know at least three of you all were there-
Four.
For at least parts of it, maybe more.
Oh, you're always hitting on me on the left.
Just, just a few things. The Board of County Commissioners got partway through the, uh, the proposed amendments and continued it to December 19th at 9:00 AM, and we, um, they got through basically about the first 10 pages of the ordinance. They decided not to reclassify mines as special exception uses, went with version two, the administrative permit plus public notice and so forth. They, um, they also voted that the applications, the three applications in the pipeline that have been on hold will come under and be subject to the new regulations. They also, um, voted that the hydrology report and expert review, uh, will be, uh, the new requirement. There was quite a bit of discussion about the P&amp;Z recommendation of having the St. John's expertise, or having the, the expert review, or maybe even an option to have either or, but they wound up with, um, what was, what was written. And they got all the way through to where, um, we have the setbacks for, from wetlands and so forth. They discussed that for a while, but didn't approve that, but they approved everything before that, about the first 10-plus pages, so. We'll start out again on the, on the 19th, and I believe, um, there's some research that we're doing, based on the discussion staff is doing, and, uh, we should have the packet out for that. I understand it's going to go out Monday, uh, for the board, so we'll make that available. I know you all are on the interested parties list, and as soon as we have that, we'll email it out to you. That's all that I have.
Um, I appreciate the members that did go. I wasn't able to attend. I will not be able to attend the 19th, but I look forward to the outcome. Um, as to January the 8th, I do have the following. I, I was kidding earlier, but I don't, if there's any way, you know, if, if, for two reasons. One, you have, if you're going to have new appointments in two days, I think it's two days prior to that, um, not that it matters, it is the National Championship Football Game, which is probably more important than the, important than the, the appointments, but if, uh, business aside of government life without national football, is, uh, is there any way could we can, we could formally request that you all postpone our meeting? I mean, we, I know that you probably will work hard to do that, but unless we really have something, I'd, um, I'd, I'd like to see us put it off until the second week, the second Thursday in January.
We, we've been advising applicants that it was, it was preferred for a few, especially for, for the reasons of possibly having new P&amp;Z members, um, and, and also, I think there'd be some that, that couldn't even make that meeting, and you have less than that. Um, I, you know, I'm not sure that we can cancel the meeting, but we, we've advised people that we probably won't have the January as a meeting.
The only reason I ask is if, and, and which we probably could do if I asked for a motion, I imagine it could, might, my gut says it might pass, but if we did that, I, you know, I don't want to rock the boat, but I, I really think, the feeling of most of us is that we'd like to have it postponed.
Well, if you don't have a quorum, then you can't have a meeting, but I don't think we can not-
Well, I think people, most people, everybody up here is responsible. If we have a meeting, they'll, those of us, those people in town, those of us in town will show. I just, I think that it would be prudent if we could, unless we have some major item. I, I, the staff's heard it, so maybe they can work around that.
Well, you know, one other thing that we, we could do, I was just suggesting, and it makes sense, um, we could, we could reserve the, the 15th, the following Thursday-
Oh, that's a good idea.
And if, for some reason, somebody had to absolutely have something, you know, that week rather than the 22nd.
Well, I just, we are, obviously, with, with George going, we know we've got at least one new appointment. There may be several of us or several others that are shuffled around, and it gives them at least a chance to sit down with you and get acclimated, rather than hopping into the middle of a meeting right, or, right away. If, if, if that's, that, it's, it's fine with me, if, uh, it's fine with everybody else.
The other possibility would be start the meeting earlier, because I think the game is at 8:30.
It's at eight, or, yeah, I mean, they'll drag that out forever, so, you know, there'll be plenty of time, and, but, at any rate, that's, they're, they're, you all have the requests, the options here.
We appreciate your input.
If we get, you know, the 15th is fine, but if we, it may not be enough stuff, we can get by with one meeting for the month anyway, so, okay.
Who's playing what, George?
The Sisters of Little Mary's Church against-
[laughing]
Okay, Attorneys Matters?
Nothing tonight.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.